All right, you may need to click yes on your screens. But I'm going to pass things to David Levitas, L.A. Forward Institute's executive director.
Great. Thank you so much, Godfrey. Thank you all for being here today. We have 70 folks already here, and I'm sure more folks will be joining us. Like I've said, my name is David Levitas. He in pronouns, and I'm the founder and executive director of LA Forward Institute. So LA Forward Institute is a 501(c)(3) organization, nonpartisan. We don't get get involved with candidate races in terms of endorsements or support or opposition. So we're hosting this forum as a public service, you know, in a nonpartisan way. You may have heard there's another organization called LA Forward, which we partner with, which is a 501(c)(4). But this this particular forum is not connected to any endorsements that LA Forward may do and is is a separate thing entirely. You know what LA Forward Institute is, is an organization that works to make all of LA County a fair flourishing place for everybody through civic education, through community organizing, through communications, through working for policy change. And so we're really so honored that so many members of the community are here today and that we have our wonderful speakers here today and that we have really several wonderful candidates as well. So without further ado, I want to turn it back over to Godfrey Plata.
Thanks so much, David. Again, to everyone who just walked in, my name is Godfrey Plata, pronouns he and his deputy director at LA Forward Institute. And what I'll do first is sort of share the premise for our conversation tonight. So there's an election coming up on February 5th. Folks in Los Angeles who are registered voters will receive a mail-in ballot sometime that particular week, starting that day. And you'll have a month to vote for everyone on that ballot, including if you're in Council District 10 or any other even-numbered council district in Los Angeles City. That will appear, those candidates will appear on your ballot, and you'll have until March 5th to vote. What happens when there are candidates that run and there is nobody that gets 50% or more of the vote is that there will be runoffs after that between the top two candidates. And so you can expect that those top two candidates after March 5th make their way to an October slash November election. Again, mail-in ballots have created the opportunity for Angelenos to vote for an entire month. The list of candidates who qualify won't be available until December. On the streets across LA, you'll start seeing people start collecting signatures for different races in September, October. But for these particular candidates here on this call that you're going to meet, city council candidates will begin signature gathering in November is when that will happen. So just know that you're going to start seeing signatures being gathered for other types of races very soon this month, but that these particular candidates will be seeking support from residents beginning in November to qualify for the ballot. And that's why we won't know until December who actually will appear on our ballots come February. So setting up Council District 10, we've invited resident Candice Cho to tell us a little bit about herself, why she's here, and a little bit about the district to set us up before we talk about the forum today.
Thanks, Godfrey. Hi, everyone. I'm Candace. My pronouns are she/her. And I'm an attorney and a policy director at a nonprofit serving Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders in LA. Most importantly, I live in CD 10, where my partner and I are first-time homeowners. I swim in our local city-operated pool. I ride in bike lanes that end very abruptly, and the local businesses all know my dog by name. And before that, I was a resident of CD 14, where I was a former lifelong renter. Fun, in quotes, fact, since moving to LA in January 2020, 100% of my elected council members have been convicted of federal crimes for personally enriching themselves while in public office. So before moving to LA, I worked for years in New York City government. So I know how much city government matters, just like all of you in the choir on this call. The city is the first responder whenever something goes wrong, whether it's the police or unarmed crisis response or DWP working through the rainy night to fix our power when a tree fell and snapped our power lines. True story. The city is also the custodian of our public spaces. So we're talking our parks, libraries, streets, and sidewalks. The city solves problems, and when it doesn't solve them, it creates problems or contributes to problems, whether it's a pothole that needs to get filled or our homelessness crisis. And speaking of homelessness, the city makes some of the rules around how landlords and tenants interact with each other and what kind of housing gets built and where. And in a city like LA with a weak mayor and strong city council system and only 15 council members, each representing more than a quarter million people, I know who represents me and all of us in CD 10 really matters. Like every council district, CD 10 is large and diverse. It includes communities stretching from Baldwin Hills, Crenshaw, and La Merde Park through West Adams and up to Mid-City, including Faircross Heights, where I'm zooming from, Arlington Heights, and Koreatown, just to name a few neighborhoods. Our current representative on the city council, who is here with us tonight, is Heather Hutt. And she was appointed to represent us when our elected council member, Mark Ridley Thomas, was expelled from the city council after being convicted on corruption charges. Councilmember Hutt is running for election alongside seven other candidates in CD 10, which leads us to our event tonight, where six of these eight candidates are who are running to represent us in CD 10 have agreed to join all of us for a discussion of the issues facing our city. And in alphabetical order, these six candidates are Reverend Eddie Anderson, Dennis Comer, Councilmember Heather Hutt, Assemblymember Reggie Jones Sawyer, Aura Vasquez, and Grace Yu. So thank you to all of the candidates for joining us tonight, and I'm going to pass it back to Godfrey to tell us how the show is going to run.
Thank you so much, Candace. We wanted to make sure this was an organized and very clear experience for everybody on this call. So we've we're setting some ground rules for everyone, just so everyone knows how tonight is going to work. Firstly, you see on your screen already a timer. At the beginning and end of this forum, each of the candidates will have a 90-second opportunity to give an opening statement. They don't have to use all 90 seconds, but they will have up to 90 seconds. And at the very end, we'll also have 90 seconds to give a closing statement. Again, don't need to use all of them. But at 90 seconds, when that clock reaches zero, we will politely interrupt and move on to the next candidate, just to make sure we are operating with fair use of the space here for conversation. In between the opening and closing statements, what you'll find is we at LA Forward Institute will be asking five issue-related questions. These issue-related questions have been shared with candidates in advance and will be preceded by a story from a from a speaker similar to Candace, who can set up that particular question for this audience. Each candidate will be given 60 seconds to be able to respond to that question. And again, when the time runs out, we will politely move on to the next candidate. We will start from a place where we are working in alphabetical order by last name, again, starting with Reverend Eddie Anderson. But then with each subsequent question, we will rotate that. So Reverend Eddie Anderson will go last, and whoever went second will go first and vice versa. And so throughout the particular program, everyone will have an opportunity to go first, last, and every other order in terms of giving their responses. We do have a chat box open here. That chat box is to be used for education and resources to be shared. We know that some folks here have their different favorites that they may be cheering on. We ask that you do the cheering, the commentary on Twitter or other places like that. For here, this is an educational space that we are trying to hold. Here's again, the rotating alphabetical order, just so everybody is clear on the candidates, what order they're going to start in. And again, they'll start in this order, and then Reverend Eddie Anderson will move to the end. And so after that, you'll see that Dennis Comer will go first for the next question after that. And so they'll continue rotating from there. And then finally, here are the issues that we'll be asking questions about through the course of this conversation. With that said, we are going to move to opening statements first. I'm going to run the timer on the screen. It'll stay on the screen and make sure everybody sees it at all times. And we're going to start with Reverend Eddie Anderson.
Thank you, Godfrey, and thank you to LA Forward for having this forum and to all the concerned residents of CD 10. My name is Reverend Eddie Anderson. I am a community organizer with LA Voice and the senior pastor of a historic church, a Cardy Moore Christian Church in West Adams neighborhood. I'm a renter who lives in a mid-city neighborhood with my wife. And I'm running for city council because over the last three years, I've heard a clarion call in our community. Community call has been, we need representation. You want to be heard more. You want to make sure that this city moves forward. And so in this moment, I feel called to serve. I feel called to serve because I see so many opportunities to make our city so much better, especially in District 10, the most diverse district possible. We can have affordable housing in our city. We can address homelessness. As a person who was homeless three months in a city, I know the importance of wraparound care. We can cut the red tape and make sure we house our homeless neighbors. We can make sure we can reimagine what public safety looks like so that we can walk in our city, we can walk in our district and enjoy and live and thrive in our in our neighborhoods. We can make sure that our small businesses are supported and have what they need to recover from the pandemic. We can also make sure that through all of this, we can have transparency. We can make sure that every citizen, every resident's vote, every resident's voice is heard in the decision-making process and co-government together to make sure we have the Los Angeles and District 10 we all can be proud of. Thank you again, and I look forward to having this conversation.
Thank you so much, Reverend Eddie. The next person we'll hear from is Dennis Comer. Oh, you're on mute, Mr. Comer?
Good evening. I'm here before you today as a retired military officer, a dedicated public servant, currently working with the Department of Homeland Security and a passionate community leader. But most importantly, I stand before you as a candidate for Los Angeles City Council in District 10. My journey has been one of service from my time in the military, where I learned the importance of discipline and leadership, to my current role as an executive director for a nonprofit organization that's committed to the economic development of minority-owned small businesses. But it doesn't stop there. I've been a catalyst for positive change in communities everywhere I've served. In Seattle, I spearheaded the process that led to the creation of a design review board in a historically red-line neighborhood, ensuring that community had a say in the real estate development that happens there. I didn't stop at just initiating it. I proudly served as an initial member of that board, working to protect the unique character of our district and the voices of its residents. I've had the honor to participate in the key mayoral commissions and boards, including the Environmental Justice Committee, the Green New Deal Board, and the Mayor's Committee on Commercial Affordability. These experiences have given me invaluable insights into the issues that affect Los Angeles as well, from environmental concerns to economic vitality. But most importantly, I've learned that real change begins at the grassroots level right here in our neighborhoods, and I'm committed to amplifying your voices, your concerns, and your goals in District 10. I am literally changing locations from Seattle to Los Angeles, but my commitment will always be the same.
Thank you so much that that is time. Thank you. Our next candidate is Councilmember Heather Hutt.
There we go. I wanted to make sure I was unmuted. Good evening, everybody. I'm Councilwoman Heather Hutt, proudly serving in CD 10. And I first want to start by letting LA Forward and all the community members that are on today letting you know how important it is to be civically engaged and thanking you for your time. Because it is times like this where you need to get to know who the candidates are and people who are aligned with your core. I want you to know that I'm the first woman and the first African-American woman in history to hold this seat as councilwoman in the 10th district, which is a mind-blower considering we're in 2023. The road here for me has been very interesting. I had a small business here in the 10th district. I was first of all born in the 10th district, right in La Merde Park. I raised my children in the 10th district, and I also sent them to schools and churches right here in the district. What I want you to know about me mostly is that I've spent 30 years in the business of serving our community, from working in the state assembly, the state senate, and then being the first woman in the history of the state of California to serve as a statewide director for then-US Senator and now Vice President Kamala Harris. So I have experience.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman. I think you're also freezing up there a little bit, just so you know. But it has been time. Thank you so much. We'll go to Assembly. There you go. Good luck with the connection. We'll go with Assemblymember Reggie Jones Sawyer next.
Hello, everyone, and thank you, LA Forward, for putting this together. I'm Assemblymember Reggie Jones Sawyer, and I grew up in the 10th district. My family, I experienced poverty, housing insecurity, and injustice firsthand, including living with many members of my family all under one roof. It's what has informed my lifelong commitment to social and economic justice. I started my career as a labor leader, advocating for better wages for workers. In the state assembly, I fought to enact forward-thinking policies to provide more affordable housing, reduce homelessness by making it easier to build permanent housing, and make the criminal justice system fair and more just. If elected to the city council, I look forward to fighting to reduce homelessness by providing more housing and supportive services, advocating for better wages and safer conditions for workers, ensuring a more holistic vision for safer communities, enhancing regional transportation networks, and rooting out corruption in City Hall to restore the public trust. I'm the only candidate that has both administrative and legislative experience. I've been an assistant deputy mayor in the city of Los Angeles, and I retired from the city of Los Angeles. And as an elected assemblyman, I have legislative experience. I've actually made laws to make our community much better. I'm the only candidate here that's ever been elected, and I would love to be elected to CD 10 to be your representative, to work for you.
Thank you so much, Assemblymember. Our next candidate is Aura Vasquez.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with you. My name is Aura Vasquez. I'm an Afro-Latina from Colombia. I'm a former undocumented student, and I have been living and serving in this district for at least 13 years. I was elected at the Wilshire Center Koreatown Neighborhood Council, which is very part and close to my heart, and also now I serve at the Pico Neighborhood Council, really reinforcing my commitment to my community. In 2017, I made history becoming the first commissioner and the youngest commissioner appointed to the Department of Water and Power in really enacting and changing the way that the department behaves and acts towards people. I am running because it takes so much courage for all of us to stand every day and go fight out there the world to make our lives and our families and serve and be part of this community. And because for the past 10 years at least, we have not had any real leadership in this district, leadership that really thinks about our communities and that cares. I have done incredible work, national-renowned work on environmental justice, and I continue to be committed as an organizer to serve in my community. I'm asking you with the same courage that you you wake up every day to stand with me and to help elect a new and a new person.
Thank you so much, Aura. And that is time. And finally, we've got Grace Yu.
Hello, I'm Grace Yu, and I'm running for city council because it's time we have bold leadership that will put the needs of the people first and fight for the real solutions that we and our neighbors need. I want to bring trusted leadership back to City Hall. We all know the challenges that we face, public safety, lack of affordable housing, and quality city services, among others. We have the knowledge and resources to fix these problems. What we don't have is the political will to get it done. I have the drive, commitment, and experience to deliver on these real solutions our district needs and deserves. As your council member, my top priorities will be public safety, creating more affordable housing, preventing additional homelessness, and repairing and upgrading our city's infrastructure. I will focus on transparency and accountability in government to meet the needs of the people in District 10. I'm a small business owner, caregiver, attorney, former LA City Commissioner, and community leader for over 30 years. I am proud of the work I have accomplished to hold the city accountable when the city has refused to do what's right. I will continue to fight for those whose voices have been ignored. It's time to take my experience and knowledge to City Hall to fight for all of us. You can learn more about me by visiting my website, graceforla.com.
Thank you so much. And those are the six candidates who've said yes to us tonight. Thank you so much for joining us. We did invite all filed candidates for Council District 10 to attend, and so there are additional ones who are not joining us tonight. Just want to make sure everybody knows that we did reach out to everybody. With that, I'm going to pass things on to Jacqueline Amma for our first issue-related question. You're on mute. There you are.
You're still on mute.
All right. All right. Good evening. Hi. My name is Jacqueline Amma. And I want you to know that I came to I came to LA Forward as a concerned citizen, looking for ways to as to how to address my issues of concern in CD 10, like how we fall prey to the gangs in the jungle to where our privacy in our homes and apartments are constantly violated by persons going in and out and taking out and taking what they want and need at our expense. So like watching my fellow neighbors' relatives killed because they suffer from mental health challenges and our and our and our police are not trained for crisis intervention. And lastly, the need of affordable housing so our unhoused population are housed safe and healthy. So I'll be asking the question about unarmed unarmed response. And the reason why this is important to me is because so often we hear of we hear and know where where a crisis response turned deadly. I personally know of a childhood friend, brother, was attempting to commit suicide, and the police came, and he practically got them to do it for him. So this this young man died because he called for help and ended up being killed. I would love to think that there was a way to protect, there would have been a way to protect him as well as the police that responded to the call. So I'll be asking a question about unarmed response. So in your vision, in your vision for LA, what types of incidents do you think are appropriate for police to respond to? If any, and what do you believe should be attended to outside of the police, if any? Who might, what models of unarmed crisis response are you interested in? And how would you fund this and make it a reality? Dennis Comer?
Well, thank you for that important question. I believe in a community-first approach to public safety. We need to redefine some of the roles of the police and prioritize some funding investments toward alternative crisis response models. Absolutely, the police should focus on more serious crimes like violent assaults, homicides, and property crimes. And we should acknowledge that not all incidents require an unarmed response. Certain concerns like mental health crises and substance abuse issues should be addressed by trained professionals. We should look at methods to categorize 911 and emergency calls to best help the police understand the nature of the call and be prepared to dispatch the appropriate alternative resolution trained professional. To pay for this, I would look to redirect portions of the police budget towards community-based solutions. And specifically, I would look at reducing militarized or special-use assets the police may be requesting and use that money to fund any alternative resolution programs.
Okay, Councilmember Heather Hutt, please.
Question, but that story is horrifying, and I know there are so many more like that. And I'm really sorry to hear about it. I want you to know in the city that we already in June have started unarmed response office. So it's the Office of Unarmed Response. And as Chair of the Transportation, I will be helping guide unarmed response. Remember, I'm the mother of three black sons, and them being responded to by LAPD or sheriffs or anybody else is really important to me because they can be in jeopardy at any moment. So we reimagine what specifically should be a police response, what should be a response by our therapeutic vans. And I'm excited about what they're able to do in CD 8, 9, and 10. So we've already worked on making this a part of the city family and the work that we do.
Thank you. Assemblymember Reggie Jones Sawyer?
And thank you, Jacqueline, for the for the question. I believe in a holistic vision for public safety that prioritizes utilizing mental health workers and other unarmed crisis responders and regular rank-and-file police. In many ways, police officers are not adequately trained or best equipped to respond to nonviolent incidents like mental health episodes, drug and alcohol citations, minor traffic issues, et cetera. Utilizing a service-oriented approach led by unarmed crisis responders is more humane and more effective. I've worked intimately on this issue for years as Chair of Public Safety and have been attacked to the tune of millions of dollars by right-wing forces for my leadership or various criminal justice efforts. I applaud Mayor Bass for establishing the Office of Unarmed Response Framework to provide alternative 911 responses. I look forward to reviewing and enhancing the actions of this office as your elected person in City Council.
Aurora Vasquez?
Thank you. Yes. We all want to live in a community that feels safe and feels home, and it feels welcoming. And right now, the issue of unarmed crisis response is larger than public safety, but also encompasses public health and mental health. So police should respond to life-threatening violence or property crime, but not things like when people have a psychotic episode or maybe domestic violence. You know, they and even when they respond to life-threatening violence or even property crime, they should do it with responsibility that, you know, is proportional to the problem that they're handling at hand. You know, I believe that public safety and public health should be threatening alike. I believe that we should have professionals that when we have maybe unhoused folks in our streets having an episode of perhaps drug abuse, that we send people.
Okay, thank you. Grace Yu?
You know, police need to respond to violent crimes. That said, according to the LA Times, less than 10% of 911 calls are about violent crimes. Most calls are about nonviolent incidents involving someone having a crisis related to either mental illness and/or addiction. LA needs a public safety network that includes social workers and trained mental health professionals, among others. One program that has promise is LA Circle Program, which I would like to expand. It sends unarmed, trained individuals to respond to nonviolent incidents involving people who are unhoused. I would also expand LAPD's SMART teams to assist police officers in dealing people facing a mental health crisis. Even the LAPD's union is in agreement that we should not send police officers to every 911 call. We are all in agreement that we should change protocol for 911 calls. You know?
Okay, thank you. Reverend Eddie Anderson?
Thank you. For the past decade, I've been on the front lines as an organizer and as a community activist Black Lives Matter, shifting the policy which makes unarmed response such a popular and needed-time crisis issue. We can do this in LA City by emboldening the Circle Program. We can also work to take things like the Minneapolis LifeOn program, where you give vouchers instead of tickets for taillights. Why is that important? Because in District 10, 40% of the stops are black and brown folks for taillights. We can also do work for development of public employees who can handle traffic minor safety stops. And we put this through the Department of Transportation, and they are doing infrastructure improvements as well. And lastly, we can create And lastly, we can create ambassadors programs, ambassador programs that you see in the Arts District all around CD 10 to make sure that people don't have to fear when they're shopping, but know that their neighbors are taking care of them because we can keep ourselves safe as well. Police are really good for violent crimes, but nothing else.
Okay, I'd like to thank all the, all you candidates for your responses. And I want to pass things on to Casey.
Thank you so much, Jacqueline. I am not Casey Ventura. Casey Ventura, this is what he looks like. And he had an emergency a couple of hours ago, but I'm here representing his questions. So I'm just going to share with you exactly what he had written for you all. Hi, my name is Casey Ventura and I serve as the Director of Organizing for a Community Land Trust based in the district. Currently, we are in the final stages of completing a new limited equity housing cooperative. We're a building in Little Bangladesh Koreatown. We'll see the tenants collectively own the building after fighting against their previous owner who attempted to redevelop and displace the current tenants. This building will see the residents become the drivers of their housing, which for me was a personal battle as someone whose family called the district home for years. My question is regarding social housing. In 2022, voters said yes to Measure ULA, which created a transfer tax to fund affordable housing and homelessness prevention in LA. Its funding creates a pot of money for many types of affordable housing, including alternatives like social housing. The ACT LA Coalition, of which LA Forward Institute is a member, has been inspired by housing options in cities like Vienna and New York City and is working with council members now to approve social housing that is designed to be permanently affordable, built on public lands, and ultimately managed by its tenants. ACT LA's social housing platform envisions 8,000 social housing units in the next 10 years. Do you support social housing in Los Angeles? What would you do, or for Councilmember Hutt, what are you doing to make this a reality? And do you support other paths to decommodify housing? And if so, what? And we're starting with Councilmember Heather Hutt.
Thank you for that. That's a really serious question. Because housing and unhoused is a humanitarian crisis right now, not just in CD 10, but all over Los Angeles. So my office is working with ACT LA, LA Forward, Kiowa to find solutions for social housing. I think that's important that you know, since 2021, when I was first looking to work in this office, more than 2,000 units have been built. Most of them low or affordable housing with a low or very low component to it. We need to continue to work on building more houses. And with the mayor's, with the mayor's executive order, we're able to move faster in offering social housing. So we're looking in Jefferson Park and in Koreatown for spaces that will be able to do some social housing projects.
Thank you so much, Councilmember. You know, these are quick. Assemblymember Reggie Jones Sawyer? You're on mute.
There you go. It's clear that despite recent measures, Los Angeles is experiencing increased housing insecurity and homelessness. We must do a much better job and we be innovative in our approaches to ensure that housing is a right for every Angelino. That's why I strongly supported Measure ULA in 2022 and voted in support of AB 309 by my colleague in the Assembly, which would establish affordable housing, affordable social housing units for families of different incomes. The bill is now back in the Assembly floor and I will be voting for it and push our governor to sign it and bring social housing with funding to CD 10. I look forward to working with you and everyone to make this a reality. I am also working with Mayor Vat Bass to advance that legislation this year that would cut down the time it takes to convert city-owned land into housing for unhoused individuals in half. That way, we can get this done and started and ultimately bring.
Thank you so much, Assemblymember. Just keeping everyone to mind. The next person is Ara Vasquez.
Yes, we have an affordable housing crisis. There's plenty of luxury housing out there. So I most support the ULA measure and of course, social housing. That includes, you know, housing models like community land trust, for example, that will help renters like myself maybe one day own in the community that they love. But you know, we also have a lot of luxury rentals that are vacant. So why not having a vacancy tax that can also help us build more affordable housing for the people that live, that is affordable in the area where they live and also provide some, you know, safety nets for them. In addition, I think it's a great idea for us to have an inventory. LADWP, the city owns a lot of land that hasn't been developed. And there's a beautiful model in Vienna, for example, with a public-private partnership where we can have housing that is affordable for folks, that can be mixed housing and it can help.
Thank you so much, Ara. Grace Yu?
If we want to resolve and prevent homelessness while making housing more affordable, we need a variety of approaches. We are a big city with a lot of different types of people who have different needs and different resources. So we need lots of different housing options and we should not be afraid to take different paths, especially when we have working examples in other cities. I like Pasadena. Social housing is a fascinating idea. As LA moves forward, we need to pay close attention to the details. We also need transparency in the process so the people will understand what's going on and how it differs from what is known as public housing, which has faced challenges for decades. There are many types of housing options and efforts I support. What we need is less bureaucracy, less bending to powerful interests, and more implementation. I am ready to lead with the help of experts to turn the city around.
Thank you so much. And we've got Reverend Eddie Anderson next.
Yes, I support ULA. I work with community activists and advocates to help drive the ULA and get it passed around the citywide. In order to implement it, we will need to also change the city process of developing on public land to cut down on the year it takes to build. Namely, we need to entitle projects earlier during the RFP process to make sure we can build more affordable housing. Also, ULA was there for rent protection. I'm a renter and 76% of the people living in CD 10 are renter or housing burdened. So we need to fund the rent protection measures of ULA. We can also invest in community land trust to make sure that community members can cut down on justification in our neighborhood and start owning their own land as well, as well as create pathways to homeownership similar to what Boston and Detroit and Atlanta are doing. We can give down payment assistance to first-time homeowners in our city. All of this makes sure that housing is a human right and that we fight poverty and not the poor in our city.
Thank you so much. And finally, we've got Dennis Comer.
I wholeheartedly support social housing in Los Angeles. The measures passage in 2022 just shows the people's commitment to addressing the housing crisis and homelessness. We need to check, we need to create innovative solutions like social housing to create real change. To me, the solution should be about providing stable, affordable homes within our communities and ensuring people have a place to call their own if they so choose. I intend to make LA's vision a reality and everyone needs to be a part of the effort to help identify public lands for these projects and ensure these projects remain permanently affordable. In addition, in addition to social housing, we need to explore various options such as community land trusts, inclusionary zoning, and mandatory housing allowances. There are plenty of solutions to be had, but I would look to explore not only the unintended consequences, but also be aware of the potential unintended consequences by studying the lessons learned from successful models nationwide.
Thank you so much. And that concludes our social housing round. I'm going to pass things on to Steve King.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Steve King and I'm a resident of Koreatown and the Director of External Affairs at KYCC, which stands for Koreatown Youth and Community Center. For many decades, the Koreatown community has advocated for equitable representation and transparency from our elected officials. Recently, I've partnered with the AAPI Equity Alliance, LA Forward, and our LA Coalition to organize a Koreatown convening to discuss independent redistricting and city council expansion. Overwhelmingly, many of our Koreatown residents are supportive of city council expansion, which would address the issue of equity and representation. And here's my question tonight. Los Angeles has had 15 city council districts since 1925. Now, almost 100 years later, each council member represents over 264,000 people, giving us the highest ratio of residents to council members in the nation. Compare that with 170,000 people to each council member in New York City or 54,000 people to each elder person in the city of Chicago. Do you support city council expansion to provide equitable representation for all Angelinos? If yes, how many seats do you think we should have or the appropriate population per council district? First, I would like to ask Assemblymember Reggie Jones Sawyer. Assemblymember, you're muted.
Yes, we do need to increase the size of city council, something I've called for since the start of my campaign. Angelinos are really fed up with City Hall for several reasons. But one is that our elected representatives are not responsive and accountable to the voters. Currently, LA City Council members each represent nearly 260,000 people, by far the most in the country and most significant than most mid-sized American cities. However, despite the overwhelming appetite for more responsive government, Angelinos have historically resisted expanding the city council. If, if a reaction, it's a reaction that I have empathy for, but the justification for it still is the same. We need to cut, we need to increase the double the size of the city council, but cut the pay of every city council member so that no, no one has to pay a dime more for their representative.
Thank you, Assemblymember. Next, I would like to ask Ara Vasquez.
Not only we need to expand the city council size, but we need to have an incredible reform in the city charter and do a lot of changes. And as it was mentioned, it's been almost 100 years since we haven't had a city charter reform. I believe that having at least double the size of city council can alleviate a lot of the anxieties that a lot of us have when we try to connect with our city council member. The other thing is that we need a very strong redistricting reform. We need to be able to elect our city council members and not the other way around. The voters of this city and the people that live in this city should have a say. And having an independent redistricting process is a good start. Like, for example, District 10 is one of the most diverse. It has Koreatown, which could potentially, having, you know, doubled the size of the city council, could have their own representative.
Thank you, Ara. Next, I would like to ask Grace Yu.
No one wants more politicians, not even politicians, but we do need better representation. And LA does need to change the number of council districts. But we also need to change other things, such as our redistricting process, so it's independent from political meddling. Make the City Ethics Commission independent. Reform the planning and land use process. Make government more transparent and have city council meetings more accessible to the public. In terms of exact council size, I'm torn. A group of academics have suggested increasing the council to 25 from our current 15. But what we really need to ensure is that the budget for council members and staff does not increase from what we have now. I would like to see more public meetings and more public engagement about the size of the city council. Let's not rush to a ballot measure until we are more confident that the change will be effective.
Thank you. Next, I would like to ask Reverend Eddie Anderson.
Thanks, Steve, for that question. One of the greatest honors of my life has been serving as a redistricting commissioner for CD 10. And while serving as a redistricting commissioner, I heard over and over again, people saying, we're not getting representation. That's why I fought so hard to make sure that Koreatown was whole for the first time in CD 10, as well as Little Ethiopia. And what we can do now is have an independent redistricting commission. Understand and I 100% support an independent redistricting commission to make sure that we draw the lines appropriately so that we can have an expanded city council. Our LA, one of the organizations that I work with, suggests that we can have 23 to 31 councils seats. What does that mean? That means that 23 to 31, we have plurality, which means AAPI, voters, black voters, Latinx voters, minority voters all across the city would be able to have representation. Neighborhoods would be able to have their voices heard. We need to expand city council. We need to do it now with independent commission and charter reform.
Thank you. Next, I would like to ask Dennis Comer.
I wholeheartedly support expanding the city council to ensure equitable representation for all Angelinos. The fact that each council member represents over 264,000 people is a bit much, and I understand how our community can feel a bit abandoned. I believe we should increase the number of council seats to provide more localized and accessible representation, but I would balance that against the need to ensure that increased representation doesn't lead to an increase in bureaucracy, thus causing more inefficiency and delays. Instead of immediately looking to increase the size of council seats just to be in line with Chicago or New York ratios, I would offer a more measured approach. I would set a goal for increasing to 20 seats with the goal of having 30 seats in the next 10 years. That allows a process where the communities aren't rushed to compete for resources and it allows for a more robust focus on which districts should be divided and how first. After we've established a good set of protocols and rules that are inclusive, it would be much easier to justify.
Thank you. Councilmember Heather Hutt?
Thank you so much for this question. This is really important to me because I'm the only candidate that's actually on the committee that is looking at redistricting and what the number looks like. And for me, the number is 25. 25 is going to give us more representation. Like the other candidates have said, I agree that we need to have AAPI representation, more of it on the council. I agree that we need to have LGBTQ representation on the council. And going to 25 will give you about 150,000 people per district with opportunities of neighborhood representation so that like minds can be there to bring that perspective to the table. It is time for reform. I'm glad to be on this committee and I will be voting to put it on the ballot since I'm on the committee for our November ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for your responses. I will pass the baton over to Eva.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for being here. My name is Eva Marinelli and I am part of the Transportation Justice Group with LA Forward and I have been for several years. I'm honored to join you today to ask you a question about mobility. Mobility justice is extremely important to me as somebody who does not drive. I rely on the bus, light rail, and pedestrian infrastructure across our city to get around. The city of Los Angeles made a commitment to its residents with the Mobility Plan 2035, which focuses on improving safety, access, infrastructure, data-informed decision-making, and healthy communities for all of us that walk, ride, scoot, roll, and drive in the city. But since passing the Mobility Plan in 2015, less than about 10% of that plan has actually been implemented and that 2035 deadline is creeping up on us. So my question for the candidates tonight is what project that's in the Mobility Plan is the biggest priority for you in the district? And what steps do you plan to take to ensure its full implementation? First, I'm going to pass it off to Ara Vasquez.
So I ride bicycles to work and very shortly after I started riding in Los Angeles, I got hit by a car and ended up in the emergency room. This couldn't be more close to hard for me. So pedestrian safety, every time we don't take action on pedestrian safety, somebody dies in our streets. And I know that this has been a car-centric city, but we start, we need to start changing our minds and hearts to make sure that the LA that we want to live in today is a people-centric city and not car-centric city. We need to make space for our riders so that they can be safe. We need to have, support a vision zero, zero. And I also support the Health District LA ballot, which is coming up in 2024. And I, and I will work with departments and any other agencies to implement these plans because it's the right thing to do and it saves lives.
Thank you so much, Ara. Next, Grace Yu? Thank you so much, Ara. Next, Grace Yu.
You know, mobility is a massive, complicated issue, especially here in L.A. and hard to talk about in sixty seconds. The biggest priority for my district is public safety. Recent news stories about violent crimes affecting public transportation is keeping people away from the buses and metro. Not only do we need public transportation to be safe, we need the public to believe that they will be safe riding it, or they won't. When we talk about safety-related mobility, we know the problems. Lack of bike lanes, curb cuts, effective lighting, and speeding vehicles. People deserve to be safe regardless of whether they are in a car, walking, biking, or waiting for a bus. Full implementation is tricky. First, we have to prioritize the projects, then look at streamlining some of the city's bureaucracy. It should not take numerous city departments to agree to put out one shade structure at a bus stop. It's important for us to work more effectively.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Reverend Eddie Anderson.
I'm a pro-transit candidate. Let me tell you why. Since passing at McCarty Memorial in the West Adams area, Adams Boulevard, I've seen three people get hit in front of my church. The worst call I ever got on Sunday morning was a parishioner calling saying that their mother was killed crossing Adams in Arlington. So I'm a pro-transit candidate. I want to fight to ensure that C.D. Ten is a walkable, bikeable district. This means creating safe, walkable, bikeable streets. This means prioritizing the funding for these vital improvements like Destination Pico, and we need to complete these streets. Secondly, I will work with Metro to enhance the connections around the major transit hubs in C.D. Ten. Expo Line, Crenshaw Line, Purple Line, and Bus Hubs. We need to do better at these C.D. Ten stations. Lastly, I'll say it again. I'm a pro-transit candidate, period, because I believe that this city should be walkable for everyone, that it should be a people-centric city. And I will support bus lanes in the district and not work to block these from being built in the district.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Dennis Comer.
Hi. I'm a former Army Transportation Officer. And expansion of the Plank Mobility Plan 2025 is probably the most, is the biggest priority. We need to augment the current hub and spoke system to provide interconnectivity between the spokes. As such, safety must be our utmost concern, from the safety of the infrastructure to the safety of our commuters. Any plans going forward must speak to safety. To ensure implementation of this vital project, I would secure both funding and partnerships at all levels of the government, from city to federal, public and private, to expand our public transit systems. I look to collaborate with community stakeholders and transportation experts to create a plan that not only addresses our immediate needs, but also prepares us for future growth. Without the safety issue, you have a ridership issue. And in order for it to be efficient, you need more riders to make sure it is a good and safe and efficient system. That's how I would move forward on mobility.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Councilmember Heather Hutt.
Thank you for that question. If if this question was a climate question, I'd certainly say, take the city fleet and give them alternative fuels as quickly as possible. But for mobility in C.D. Ten, we need to talk about traffic calming measures. Pedestrians and bicyclists continue to be injured. You see that through Vision Zero, that they're killed at alarming rates, and we have to do something. So we achieve that by implementing our programs under the Mobility Plan, like the Bicycle Lane Network, the Neighborhood Enhancement Network, and the Pedestrian Enhancement Network. Every neighborhood in C.D. Ten, whether it's Lamert Park or Robertson, Jefferson Park, or Mid-City, deserve to have great streets, those that are safe, walkable, or bikeable. And we've been funding traffic calming measures all around our school locations. In C.D. Ten,
Thank you so much, Councilmember. Finally, we have Assemblymember Reggie Jones Sawyer. Assemblymember, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. I'm a big proponent for accelerating the 2023 Mobility Plan. We have a wonderful opportunity right now with the L.A. 2028 Olympics, where the world will be watching us. Funding for that will come in droves and streams. And we can actually accomplish a lot of things that we want to do in the Mobility Plan. Next-gen business-only lanes, zero-emission buses, and charging infrastructure, first-and-last-mile connectivity stations, bus stop improvements, partnerships on street furniture and shade tree cover. But most important, safety. If we're going to have the world looking at us in 2028, we have to make sure our infrastructure in Los Angeles, we're moving hundreds of thousands of people around here in Los Angeles that it's safe and that they want to ride it. This is our great opportunity to do it. I've seen it done before. We can do it now to get this done and accelerate it.
Thank you so much to all the candidates for their response, and I am excited to pass things off to Danny Woodson.
Hi, thank you. So my name is Danny Woodson. I'm a performing artist, hence the sound booth that I'm in right now. And I've lived in L.A. for twelve years. I've been a member of L.A. Ford for about three years now, a little over three years. I create social media content for L.A. Ford, and I have served on the endorsement committee a few times. So my question is about climate policy. It's an important topic to me because, first of all, as we know, minority and low-income communities are hit first and the hardest by climate change. But eventually, we all are affected. I'll honestly, I'll never forget walking out of my apartment one morning going to work and seeing ash literally falling from an orange sky because for the first time in living in L.A., a wildfire was that close to me. They say, as California goes, so goes the nation. So if that's true, and I believe it is, then what we do here locally can have a national and international effect. And that's what brings me to my question. L.A. City has a follow-through problem on climate goals. We've declared that we'll shift to one hundred percent renewable electricity by 2035, and oil drilling throughout the city, cut car trips in half by 2035, and reduce greenhouse gas emissions twenty-five percent by 2025. And yet, we aren't on track to make any of these goals, some of which are actually enshrined in law. So how would you address, or to our current councilmember, Hutt, how are you addressing the implementation gap between council motions and the reality on the ground when it comes to climate policy? And I would like to first hand this off to Grace Yu.
As the new councilmember, the first thing I will do is tell the truth. We are not on the road to reaching our climate goals, and we need dramatic change in order to get us on track. L.A. City leaders say things, even vote on things, yet they know these goals are not attainable. So after we admit that we're failing, we need to figure out how we're going to reach our goals. If it's using the carrot-stick approach, do we need more carrots, more sticks? We must be prepared to upset powerful interests such as those who profit from oil drilling. Many people in this district still have operating oil wells near their homes because the leaders in C.D. Ten put politics ahead of people. Right now, city leaders have climate policy on their website. But what we really need is for them to stand up to the wealthy, powerful interests that block progress. I will be one of those leaders.
Thank you. And next, I would like to hand it off to Reverend Eddie Anderson.
L.A. City has a follow-through problem on climate issues. As the co-chair of the California Poor People's Campaign, we said that climate change is the fourth evil that the city and the nation face because then unholy match among oil, capitalism, and racism. As someone who has asthma, I know the only way that we can actually get this through is through leadership at the council, progressive leadership, period. We need to work with department heads and the mayor to do the work that would get us to these targets. It's a matter of political will, and I'm ready to get to work to ensure we stay on track. We don't just need more soundbites from candidates, we need to do the work. That means ensuring departments that are tasked with targets from DWP to Department of Transportation have the needed resources to implement and to do the work on the ground. The council needs to make these budget priorities. For budgets are moral documents, and where the money goes, it tells us how we care about our community. Let's put our money in climate change. Let's put our money in safer streets. Let's put our money in our community, and when elected, I'll ensure these goals are advanced.
Thank you. Next, Dennis Comer.
As a new Angelino listening to the issue, I share your frustration and deep concerns about the city's lagging progress on critical climate goals. Having just finished my term as a member of the City of Seattle's Green New Deal Board, and having gone through this process of crafting legislation for the mayor's office, here's what I would propose to do. First, I would advocate for stronger oversight and transparency, ensuring that we diligently track progress on climate goals. I want to establish clear benchmarks and relook the current metrics. Secondly, I would collaborate with environmental experts, community organizations, and businesses, develop actionable strategies. I want to see where we can leverage public-private project facilitation as it benefits the residents and not just the private entities. Finally, I would look to investigate the operation and ownership of the area's public utility companies, making them partners in our climate efforts and accountable to the community itself.
Thank you. Next, Councilmember Heather Hutt.
Thank you for this question. The damage from climate change isn't in the future, it's happening right now. And the climate crisis is wreaking havoc on our communities, just like my son has asthma. It's abundantly clear that we need a green revolution right now, and it will slow down climate change and provide middle-class jobs. DWP has not been working fast enough, and the city needs to prioritize funding for climate projects. As your city councilwoman, I was a sponsor of adopted ordinance that tightened up even food waste laws, including single-use bags and disposable utensils. I'm working every day to ensure that our city fleet is a hundred percent renewable as quickly as possible and turning a formal oil drilling site into a hundred percent affordable housing right there on Washington near Fourth Avenue. It's not about words, it's really about action.
You. Assemblymember Reggie Jones Sawyer.
Got it this time. While the city council has passed resolutions in support of achieving total carbon neutrality by 2023, the reality is that we're still profoundly lacking a strategy to implement these goals properly. While there are no easy solutions to addressing the most significant existential crisis of our time, it's clear that we must focus on enhancing electrification, public transit, water recapture, and the use of green materials throughout the city. On the city council, I will push for funding to achieve these goals, including pursuing resources from federal, state, and nonprofit partners, and ensure regular progress reporting to monitor the progress of achieving our goals. Additionally, I will use my experience in the, as the only candidate with a background with both legislative and bureaucratic operations to effectively unify responses between neighborhood councils, the L.A. Cool City Challenge Team, and other city departments that address.
Thank you. Ara Vasquez.
So I have been working on these issues since I was eleven years old, from getting L.A. off of coal to enacting a Green New Deal and getting L.A. to one hundred percent renewables and facing out of our neighborhood all dreaming, you know, ending our reliance on single-use of plastic and a lot more. The question here at hand is how we're going to bridge the gap. I have been bridging the gap since day one. We have people here that have been serving and I have been leading for a really long time, and we cannot trust them to continue leading our city in an issue that they really don't care about and don't really have any knowledgeable knowledge for. So what I'm proposing, just like you have to go and when you get elected, work with fifteen other city council members, it's time for us to put climate first and people first because the inaction is costing lives.
So much. Thank you to all the candidates, and I will pass things back to Candace.
Thank you. So I want to thank all the candidates for your service as well as your time tonight and your thoughtful and often concise responses. I also want to thank everyone for joining us. We're now moving to closing statements where each of the candidates will have ninety seconds to share whatever you want to leave with our neighbors. It could be a conclusion, it could be a response to other candidates, could be how people can learn more about your candidacy, a song and dance, anything. So let's start again in alphabetical order with Reverend Eddie Anderson.
It's been wonderful to be here with each and every one of you on tonight. I believe that the decision is clear. We can either continue with the status quo, or we can elect progressive, bold leaders who are willing to do what's needed for our community. I'm the only candidate who has experience as a service provider, an advocate, and an executive leader. And I've been on the front lines for over a decade, fighting to make sure that that happens, writing policy, showing up in City Hall, showing up at the state level, working with neighbors day in and day out, listening to people in pastoral sessions, listening to people on the side of the street, talking to small business owners, finding out what what do you need? Because I believe one thing, the people close to the pain know the solution. The people close to the pain know exactly what we need. And your pain has spoken to us, and you said, we need affordable housing. We need to fight poverty and not the poor. We need to have safer, cleaner streets. We need to make sure that we invest in climate change and make sure our budgets are more documented, and we are reinvesting in community services with transparency. And I commit to doing each and every one of those things. You can look at my platform, Anderson for L.A. And so I ask you one question, C.D. Ten, what's in your hand? What's in your hand tonight is that you have visions, you have dreams of what can make this city better, but you also have a vote. And I believe if I put our hands together, it is mosaic of a district. We can have built a coalition that makes citizens, number one in our community, do co-governance and work together for a better C.D. Ten.
Thank you. Next, we have Dennis Comer.
So my journey from military service to my current roles reflects my dedication to leadership and trust within public service. I firmly believe in a community-first approach in regards to public safety. We must examine the roles of the police and redirect funding towards alternative crisis response models, especially for incidents that don't require an armed response. In addressing the housing crisis, I support social housing. It's about providing stable, affordable homes. We must learn from successful models and ensure permanent affordability while avoiding unintended consequences. On the transportation front, safety is paramount. For not only access, but for increasing ridership, I like to enhance our public transit systems to enable interconnectivity and to prepare for future growth. On city council expansion, I absolutely support the idea, but I'm very mindful of avoiding excessive bureaucracy. I believe the measured approach is the best way forward, and gradual expansion ensures thoughtful consideration and inclusivity. I believe my past experiences, background, and skill set as it relates to strong, transparent, and accountable leadership will increase our community's power to bring about positive change. It is not lost on the city's residents. We need an overall change in how the city is governed. It is now up to you to recognize the qualities and experience necessary in strategic problem-solving that affects the greatest change. I personally bring these traits to you and more, and with that, humbly request your support as your C.D. Ten councilperson of choice.
Thank you. Next, Councilmember Heather Hutt.
There we go. Listen, everybody, I'm the right person for this job. I have the experience, and I am the right person at this time. As a lifelong resident of C.D. Ten, someone who raised their children here, I understand the needs of our community. And better than that, I understand what can make C.D. Ten better. I come from the trenches of Los Angeles, implementing policy and building coalitions. As a city council member for C.D. Ten, my staff and I hit the ground running. We ramped up our community service and outreach in order to build relationships that we need to tackle real issues here in the district. My record of on-the-ground, meaningful change will outweigh any grandiose ideas or proclamations of what they think they can do. My team is here to work, and we are poised to win. I hope to count on you, my friends, neighbors, and residents in C.D. Ten, along with all my partners, to continue this journey to make C.D. Ten a better place. Thank you, L.A. Forward, for this opportunity to meet with you and answer these questions. I appreciate your time, and I want to work closely with you as the councilwoman of the Tenth District. Thank you again.
Thank you. Next, we have Assemblymember Reggie Jones Sawyer.
And thank you, L.A. Forward, for putting this together. As a labor- As a labor leader and assembly member, I've been committed to economic justice and protecting workers' rights, including fighting for better wages and safer conditions for essential workers. I've also fought to reduce homelessness by providing more housing and supportive services, including working with Mayor Bass to turn city-owned land into homeless housing and cut the red tape to make it easier to build affordable housing and emergency housing for the unhoused. I'm also committed to protecting renters by placing strict limits on the ability of landlords to raise rents. Now, I'm running for the city council to end the status quo of inaction. I will use my unmatched legislative and bureaucratic experience to help speed up the construction of affordable homes and help families stay in their communities. I've also worked to reform the criminal justice system so that it works for everyone, not just for the wealthy and well-connected, including leading the effort to raise standards for police officers while fighting for more investments in programs for at-risk youth, violent prevention job training, and education. Lastly, I look forward to taking on corruption in City Hall, fighting for redistricting reform, doubling the size of the city council, and for new oversight requirements to crack down on pay-to-play by special interests to the city or more effectively deliver and more effectively deliver services to the people. Together, we can make CD10 the best.
Thank you. Next, Aura Vasquez.
I was thinking about how to answer best this question, and I thought about remembering all of the things that we have been through together. We just went through a pandemic that devastated small business owners in our district. Forty percent of them closed forever. We were experiencing homelessness in a way that we have never seen, where our streets looked like refugee camps. Seeing our neighbors and our friends leaving California because it's too expensive to live here. Having immigrant communities, being in fear to call the police because they don't know if the police is going to come to the rescue or to arrest them. Having, listening to recordings where some people in this very forum were mentioned. Seeing politicians moving to our community so that they can run. Enough with this. We need to elect people that are for us, that are going to fight for us, that care about us, that understand our struggle, that understand what it's like to get on the bus every day and go to work. How many of you can say that? How many of you can say that you have been working hard to make climate better for our communities? How many of you can say that you live a paycheck to paycheck, and you're scared that one day your landlord is going to call and say you have to go? I'm here for the long run. I'm here for you.
Thank you. And finally, we have Grace Yu.
I would like to thank LA Forward for hosting us here tonight. Your process was delightful, as it was transparent, well-prepared, and well-executed. The people in CD10 are busy, and hosting a forum like this helps put a spotlight on how important the upcoming election is. I also want to thank all those in attendance here tonight. I hope you will share the information that you have received. And if you want to learn more about my candidacy, please go to graceforla.com. I am a typical Angelina. I'm an immigrant, a K-12 LAUSD alum, and I was able to go to college and law school thanks to my hard-working parents. I'm able to run for office now, thanks in part to my mother's union pension, which helps provide for my parents' retirement and the union's awesome healthcare. I worked as an attorney representing abused and neglected children at LA County's Children's Law Center, as the executive director of two national nonprofit organizations, and now I run my small law firm. I also served on numerous boards and committees, such as the Sierra Club, the LA County Democratic Party, and as a neighborhood council board member. I try to look at serious, complicated issues as opportunities to provide well-paying jobs for our residents, allowing businesses to innovate and to let the city invest in itself. By doing so and working together, we can find ways to solve our problems while creating...
Thank you so much to all of our candidates for their closing statements and for engaging in tonight's first public conversation amongst all of the candidates who agreed to LA Forward Institute to come here and represent themselves around these particular issues. I also really want to thank the speakers tonight for taking their time to ask and develop questions for the candidates. I'm really moved by the stories that preceded a lot of the questions that folks asked. A lot of this might be really interesting for politicos out there, but this is really at heart about what's going to make our lives better. As Angelinos, so really thankful for the speakers who shared so vulnerably of themselves tonight. As we jumped into the deep end tonight, this is just the first step of so many different things that folks can do to engage civically. Again, it's in November when you would be able to support folks to make sure they end up on the ballot through signature gathering. And so that's what you can expect in the future to engage with the candidates here. You can also click on their many links and email addresses that they've shared in the chat box as well. For folks who were ignited by the conversation around the possibility of expanding city council, LA Forward Institute is having a conversation about that on the 14th, virtually, online, at 7:30 PM. You can access the link at laforward.org/calender. We are also doing this same conversation, but with candidates for the Council District 14 race. In Council District 14, while we are still confirming candidates, we have confirmed every single candidate who has raised money in that race. So if you're keeping track of Council District 14 candidates, you know who to expect already from folks who are already off and running in that particular race to be joining us on the 21st. You can join us at lafour.org/events/CD14forum in the meeting chat, as you see there. Otherwise, thank you all so much for joining us again, again to the candidates, the speakers, and for you, the audience members who joined us. We had almost 100 people in here. I'll call long. And again, we'll be posting this particular conversation online for everybody here to share as we get started figuring out what the future of CD10 in Los Angeles look like. Thank you all so much, and have a great evening.
Thank you. Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. This was really an awesome conversation.
Thank you. Good discussion.